To make sure that it's not.
And then this is where you mute, yeah. So that was. Alright, that's the only thing. It should be all set. And then I'm muted. Okay, and then when he says it's okay to go, then I just do the meeting. Okay, so I'm gonna go back to, yep. Alright, thank you. Alright, so you guys ready to go live?
Yes, I'm ready if Tim is.
Alright, yep. Alright, so. Excuse me?
Are you planning on reading the intro like you did the last time?
Oh.
Because I think it's longer than what I have on the agenda, pretty sure. We're not live yet, are we?
We're live on YouTube.
We are live right now.
What's that?
Are we live right now?
On YouTube.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, alright. Okay, this open meeting of the Board of Selectmen Interview Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, the town in Northborough has been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have well meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of the Board of Selectmen Interview Committee are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows this committee to meet entirely remotely, so as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such public participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. And if you can confirm that I can hear you remotely, Selectmen Kaylin?
Present.
Selectmen Rutean?
Present.
Okay, you may start your meeting.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is the acceptance of the meeting minutes of October 27th, 2020. Do I hear a motion?
Selectmen Rutean, I. Well, do we accept the meeting minutes of October 27th?
Okay, I'll second that. Do we have any discussion about those minutes?
No.
Okay, excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Awesome, okay.
Thank you. Alright, we have our first applicant for the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee, along with Finance Director Jason Little. I'll bring them both in.
Okay, great. Hi, Jason.
Hi, good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Hi, Jason.
Hi, hi, Tim. Thanks for having me.
I think you're on mute still, Beth.
Here we go.
I'll contour what I have on your home.
Wouldn't come up, there we go.
Hey, Beth, how you doing?
I'm fine, thanks.
How are you?
So I often find too that if I walk in circles, the mute comes off.
Right?
So Beth, have you met Jason Little, our Finance Director?
I did recently, yes.
We did get to meet recently, yeah.
Oh, very good, okay. So we have those introductions over with. Wonderful, Beth, thank you very much for being here and applying for a position on the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee. First, if you could tell us about yourself, your background, and why you're applying to this position?
Well, I grew up in Northborough. I have lived here all my life. As you most know, my husband works for Northborough. We've been here for all our lives. I work locally at Lowe's Variety, I'm sure you've all seen me there. I've joined the garden club, I have two kids that were gone to the school system. As most of you know, I've joined BC4T, and we're trying to get our veterans' faces out there with our Hometown Hero banners. And I'd like to be more involved, and I thought this is a good way to start out small and help out if I could.
Wonderful. Jason, if you could tell us about anything you're aware of about that particular committee and what basically happens and what needs to be approved in order for that committee to function?
Sure, thanks, Leslie. Well, you probably have read the description of what the committee does from the town's website. It's a five-member committee with, it's the Town Assessor, the Treasure Collector, and then three members of the public, which are appointed by the selectmen. And the purpose of the committee is to administer the taxation fund, which is called, it's a tax checkoff fund, which means that people that, when they're paying their tax bill, can check off and pay additional money with their tax bill to go into this fund. And, you know, the fund is for the benefit of, you know, needy citizens who are elderly and disabled. And kind of the point is to help people that may not be assisted by other state or local relief measures. The demands of this committee are, it meets about once a year. They have an annual cycle so that applications come in, and the meeting happens so that the awards can be, you know, determined and given so that it can be applied within the same fiscal year as the taxes when they're due. The fund has about $50,000 in it. Last year, during the award cycle, it awarded $26,000 approximately to 27 different applicants. And the applicants for the committee are generally referred to the committee from the Senior Center, the Assessor's Office, and Treasure Collector. So if anybody, you know, knows of somebody in need, they can, you know, work through the caseworker at the Senior Center or contact, you know, usually people that have trouble with their taxes. We're aware of them through the Treasurer's Office or the Assessor's Office.
Okay.
Jason, a question for you, you know, with more people paying online. I know we do, for example. I think maybe then before. Are you finding that fewer and fewer people are actually checking off that option and donating additional money? Have you found a decrease in the fund because of that?
Well, I have to say, I do not think so. People are still able to send money in, and people do, you know. We also, just because it's a tax checkoff fund, there's also Companion Gift Fund. And we do take money in through the gift fund. You know, that's not a trend I've seen personally.
Okay. Okay, that's good to know, I was wondering about that. Okay. How do you, Beth, what's your schedule and how available are you in the evenings?
My evenings are the best time, I work until 3:00, so after that, I'm home.
Okay, okay. Do you have questions of Jason especially, in terms of what this committee does and what your role would be?
I know, I think I understand it, I think I've read the application. I guess my role is just, do you vote on them, or are you just submitted by people? How is, I guess, how are their?
Well, the process is, you know, again, we need to be sensitive to individuals that are applying for help and, you know, submitting financial information. And, you know, it is sensitive information that we're dealing with. Our staff will take the list of applicants and will boil it down so that it is confidential to the committee when we're dealing with these in a public meeting. So you are making the decision on, you know, giving aid to people that could be your friends, could be your family, could be, you know, your neighbor. So again, it's important that it's a very sensitive topic. You know, depending on the number of applicants, you know, the amount of awards can vary per year. So, you know, there's not unlimited money, and, you know, there's, there is a lot of need. So, you know, that's just how I would answer that question.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions, Beth, of us at all, or?
I don't have any questions, I just would like to really be able to help out. You know, being where I am at the store, you know, I see a lot of need. I see Tommy Lowe helping out everyone, and I'd like to help out if I could.
That sounds great. And again, we have another applicant who we actually interviewed previously in September.
Sure.
So in the event you are not selected, you know, there's a page on the website that lists openings. And I, you know, I say this to all applicants, that please, please consider looking at those and see if there's anything else that you might be interested in, because we really need good volunteers.
Very good.
I think we've evolved a little bit from the trying to find people for things, but sometimes it gets to that point. Or we'll have just one person, so, and there's so many wonderful people in town. So if there is anything else that you're interested in, in the event you're not picked for this, please consider doing that.
Absolutely.
Because you have a nice background, and thank you very much for all your work with the BC4 troops, that's fabulous. We talked about that at our selectmen's meeting last night, really, really sensational.
It was pretty cool. Michelle and Leslie, I was kind of backgrounded banking and small things, but Leslie and Michelle gave their heart and soul, and it's just, it came up, it's very exciting.
It really is, it really is.
Yeah, it looks great.
Thanks.
And I think previously I'd seen a picture of Bill Griffin, I think, standing. There was a picture of him somewhere, and I saw him there again today.
Yep, I saw him and his daughter and Pat out there yesterday taking photos, and it's wonderful.
You can tell that means a lot.
Yep.
So, that's terrific, so thank you very much for all that.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. So we will be, we have a couple more interviews for a couple other committees tonight, and then we'll be deliberating at the end of the meeting.
Very good.
So, thank you very much for interviewing the time.
Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you, Beth.
Take care, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jason.
Thanks. I'm just gonna stand, I'll stand by and wait for you if you want me to be involved in your deliberation. If not, I can get off now.
We'd be happy to have you stick around, that's fine.
Okay, I'll, I'll just.
Excuse me, I was gonna say, I'll put you in the waiting room, Jason.
Okay.
Okay, alright. And I'll bring in the other, the next interview is for the Youth Commission, and it's June David Fores, our Family and Youth Services Director, and then a member of the Youth Commission are also going to be. I'll bring them in.
Hi, June, how are you?
June, you're muted?
And Gilli, you are?
Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good, good.
I'm trying to change my name, sorry. I have a work Zoom and a personal Zoom, and I never know which one it's going to log me in under, so.
Sure.
Well, Trinity Church isn't the worst name I've seen.
No. No, no wacky nicknames or anything.
That sounds great. So everybody's on, everybody can hear? Okay. Wonderful, I'm Leslie Rutean, Board of Selectmen.
I'm Tim Kaylin with the Board of Selectmen.
June David Fores, the Director of Family and Youth Services.
Gilli, I can't hear you. I can't hear you, Gilli.
Gilli Nachumi, Youth Commission.
Awesome, thank you. And we have Sherri Clark here, as an applicant for the Youth Commission. I think we just saw you recently.
You did, yes, for the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, yep.
Yes.
So if you could, again, we have your application, but the public who is watching the meeting obviously doesn't have the benefit of seeing that. So if you could tell us about yourself, assuming no one knows anything on the application, and why you have applied for this position?
Sure. So I graduated college with a degree in sociology with an emphasis in human services, and entered my career working for the key program with youth that are involved with DSS, DYS, and family services. From there, I ended up working in a school system as an after-school director, running a bully-proofing program, and doing some administrative work. And then I was a mom and took some time off from being in an actual physical location and did a home party business for about 13 years before accepting the job at Trinity Church, where I'm the Director of Youth Programming there. And why I can't figure out how to change my name on my Zoom, sorry. On top of my actual work history, I've been involved with scouting, as a scout leader of two different troops for the past nine years, as well as volunteering at the schools and doing various different things with youth that way as well. And the reason I applied is I've been looking at a position at Youth Commission for a few years now. Finally decided to pull this plug this year, because when I commit to something, I want to know that I have the time commitment and the availability to put everything into it. And prior to this year, I didn't think I was ready for that, and this year, I really feel like this was something that's been calling to me. I love working with youth. It's basically something I've been passionate about since I was, you know, 21 years old, getting out of college. And part of my job at Trinity has been trying to offer more programming, not only just to our youth at Trinity, but programs that are available to the community as well. But I'd love to be involved in doing that on a bigger scale as well, and helping the town with that, so.
Yeah, I liked your description of things that you are doing at Trinity. As you said, not only for the church but for the community. Holding programs around teen mental health, sex education, career exploration days, and healthy relationships. Though, and adulting, you said 101 was supposed to have been happening prior to COVID, but that's a lot of great stuff.
It is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's super. You have a lot of really good experience, and your interest goes way back, it sounds like.
Yes, yeah, this has basically what I've dedicated my time to. And I do really enjoy it, and I love the, both the challenges and the rewards that come with programming for youth in terms of the ever-changing need of things and how their world is changing and what they need, so.
That sounds great. June and Gilli, could you explain a little bit about how meetings would be taking place? Right now, obviously, everything's via Zoom, but if you could explain basically the schedule and how long the meetings go and what the requirements are?
Sure. So the roles of the Youth Commission, first of all, that are so important to me is that it's an advisory group. So I'm able to talk about, I present my my piece about what's going on with the programs and what the issues are that we're seeing in town. And so they're a wonderful sounding board and have really good insight into what the needs are. The other piece that's important to me is that we go around the room at the end, and I get input from, we actually have youth liaisons from the high school, which is great. We usually have two. So they can give us the inside scoop about what's really going on in the schools, which is really helpful, and also from the board members. So it's not as though you'd be running programs, but it'd be more of an advisory board to me and into the agency, into the department. We do meet typically the third Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM. We haven't had a meeting in a while, and, but we will be scheduling them soon. So it's every third Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM.
Thanks.
Gilli, do you want to talk about what it's like for you to be on the commission and what you think's important for Sherri to know?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Gilli.
I'm sorry, I'll try to shout, I'm sorry, it's like, this computer is not very well with the speaker. Anyway, it's not a huge time commitment. It's usually the hour that we sit and hear June talking about what happened during the previous month. We can raise questions, and it's usually very interesting to know how much June is doing with the small staff and a lot of clientele. Usually, there's no problem, but if there is a problem, we are representing June if there is need. But I don't know, I've been there for five years, there wasn't one problem. So, yeah, it's not a huge commitment, and it's a very interesting meeting to sit in and to know how much, how many programs are running in town and running so smoothly that you are not aware of them unless you need them.
That's great. I know, I was really excited, I got to be on June, the one for the partnership with the schools, the mental health partnership.
Yes.
Yeah.
You certainly have a strong commitment to working with youth throughout your life. Did you have any questions for us?
Um, I don't think so, I was browsing, I took the past couple weeks to quickly look online, so I knew when you met, and kind of looked over that piece of things. So I don't, I don't really think I had any questions. No, I'm just, I'm excited, it's nice, I like to see that Northborough has a Youth Commission, and.
Alright, excellent. Well, you have a great background, you are also, in addition to having a great background anyway, you are the only applicant for this, so we will be deliberating at the end of our interviews this evening, but I don't see you here, just FYI. So we just have to make a formal motion between Tim and I, and then we would be voting on a motion at our next selectmen's meeting on the 23rd of November, so. Unless you have other questions for us, are we all set, is there anything else?
Thank you so much for your interest in this.
Oh, thank you, thanks for all the work you're doing in town.
Thank you.
It's awesome.
I'm looking forward to seeing you in the meeting.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you, June and Gilli, also for being here and for your work, we appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, it was good seeing everybody.
Same here, thank you.
Thank you, Sherri, take care.
Thanks, you too.
Thanks.
Bye now.
Okay. And our next applicant for the Historic District Commission, it's an alternate position. Bob Light is here, along with Norm Corbin.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and bring him in if you're ready.
Hi, Bob, you're on mute.
It's the official Zoom introduction. Hi, how you doing, you're on mute.
That is so true. I think Norm is getting there, I think.
I see Norm.
I see him, I don't know if he's, Norm, can you hear us? That's the other line, is can you hear us?
I, and now I'm on.
Hi, Norm, how are you?
Hi, Norm, how you doing?
Hi, Bob.
Hi, Bob.
Nice to see you. Leslie Rutean, Board of Selectmen.
Tim Kaylin with the Board of Selectmen.
Norm Corbin, the Chair of the Historic District Commission.
Bob Light.
Bob Light. And Bob, you're here interviewing for a position on the Historic District Commission as an alternate member.
That's correct.
Okay, welcome, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it. If you could tell us about yourself and why you are applying for this position?
Well, I've had strong interest in historical things, it's like a hobby of mine. And I just recently retired. I've been working, I've actually, I worked in Northborough since 1985 at St. Cobain, where Norm worked, I actually worked with Norm on a few projects. And I retired last year. I had two kids that went through the Algonquin system, the Northborough School System, and they're both obviously graduated and moved out. So I had a little bit more time on my hands, and I haven't been very active in town politics, to be honest, except since the kids got out of school, I've been obviously interested in the school committee and school issues. And I coached soccer for several years and coached baseball for several years, but pretty much, I haven't been doing too much in the last few years. I've been working hard, so up until retirement, I really didn't have much time for anything else. I have a, Norm had, I bumped into Norm several months ago, and he mentioned to me about the committee, and I'd been listening in about two or three of the committee meetings, and it seemed very interesting. So I agreed to apply.
That's wonderful, we're happy to have you here as an applicant. It is a very interesting committee. And a lot of high-profile things kind of come out of there, a lot of interesting thoughts and decisions and issues, and I think it's an interesting committee to be working on. Norm, if you could describe your committee kind of in a nutshell, and what basically you endeavor to do on that committee, and what kind of results come out of that?
Sure. So, as I talked to Bob earlier today to make sure he understood the nuances of our committee. We're actually two committees, with a Historical Commission and Historic District Commission. They have different responsibilities. We lumped them together because Northborough's a small town, and it makes more sense to just lump the two together. The Historic District Commission is responsible to work with homeowners that are in the two historic districts to keep the look of the districts, to keep them to look like they would historically look. The Historical Commission is a broader scope, probably more than anything, it's to educate the town on historical attributes that we have. We also get involved, so a lot of the signage that's been going up has been Historical Commission. We've been involved with, when there's a demolition of a historic property, we get involved with that. But we've been doing news articles in the paper, a lot of it is education, just trying to get people to realize there's a lot, for a small town, there's quite a bit of history around here.
Can you explain a little bit more about the demo? I know that you've had to get involved with some things. I think you're able to put a stay on a demolition for X number of days type of thing?
Ah, yeah, so if a historic property, the definition of a historic property is that the Massachusetts Historical Commission has identified it as a historical asset. And if one of those buildings comes up for demolition, then before the demolition permit can be let, it has to come in front of the Historical Commission for review. Our purpose is to see if it has any significance either from a historical perspective or from an architectural perspective. And if we think that it does, then we could put a six-month demo. then we could put a six-month demolition delay on the building. The purpose of the demolition delay is to look for alternatives to demolition with the current homeowners. So that's, that's one of the rules we fit.
How often do you meet typically, and how long are the meetings?
We're meeting, now we're back to our regular schedule. It's once, once a month, meetings between an hour and an hour and a half.
Okay, and when do you meet?
We meet Wednesday evenings at 7:00 o'clock.
Wednesday at 7:00?
Yeah, the third Wednesday of the month.
Third Wednesday, okay. Okay. And as an alternate member, Bob would not be able to vote?
That's, that's correct. The alternate, so the, the, the history, the Historic District Commission makeup is decided by the state, and it's set up with seven members and seven alternate members. We usually have one or two alternate members. The alternate members have full participation, except for voting. They would be involved with the vote if we need them as a quorum when we vote at a meeting with, with short people. So that's how that works.
Okay, which means Bob should get sworn in in the event his vote is needed.
Correct.
Yes, okay, okay. Bob, do you have any comments or questions about this commission?
Oh, I've been very interested in, in the workings of the commission. I have, I know I do a lot of hiking in Northborough and Westborough, and we live near the, those Westborough, the old hospital area, which is partly, partly in Northborough, so we do a little hike, hiking around there. As I said, I've lived in town since 1990, and I'd be interested in doing more participation in town. My, 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 my last job with St. Cobain, I've worked there for about 41 years, and actually, my, my last position was Director of Export Control Compliance and Government Programs. So I was involved in a lot of government contracting. I wrote government grants, proposals for Department of Energy, Department of Defense, and of course, I was involved in export control compliance. So I know how to read government regulations. I'm not sure if that's going to help in this commission, but.
It will, believe me. It will help.
It helps in every, every commission, every, every committee.
I do know how to ask for money.
Well, you have a fabulous background. I see you BSing from Rutgers in Ceramic Engineering and an MS from Penn State in Material Science. We are, right, Penn State?
Yeah, well, not, not this year, maybe.
Well, no, not this year. This year's a god already.
It's been a tough, were you a Penn Stater?
My daughter was undergraduate, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was, I was grad school there, but loved it out there.
Yeah, it's great. It is a great area, State College. So you are the only applicant for this particular position, so I don't foresee any issues with us appointing you for this. We will be deliberating at, at the end of this particular interview. We have three committees that will be doing a quick deliberation on, and then we'll put together a motion, and then we'll vote on it at our next Board of Selectmen meeting, which is on November 23rd.
Well, thank you for your consideration. I look forward to working on the commission.
Well, thank you very much for applying, and if indeed you do get appointed, definitely contact the Town Clerk's Office, and, and get sworn in so that if Norm needs your vote, then you're there.
Okay, that would be Clerk's Office, right?
Yes, Town Clerk, yep.
Yeah.
Andy Dow.
Is that Andy Dow? Okay.
Yeah.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure I have it clear in my head. So our next meeting is on the 18th. So Bob will not be, he will not be a member until the next, the 23rd, which is the following Monday. I just want to make sure I have my ducks in a row.
Right, because the Board of Selectmen has to approve, has to vote on it, so it would not be done before the 23rd.
All right, so Bob can participate, but he can't vote. Well, all right, that's good. I got it.
Right, okay.
Bye, Diane.
Thank you, Norm. Thanks for your work.
Thanks, Bob. Nice meeting you.
Thanks, take care.
Nice to see you, Bob. Take care.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Okay. Do you need a minute, or you want me to bring Jason back?
Well, that's the first one we would need to be discussing, so that'd be, that'd be great.
Okay, and we have about 10 minutes. All right.
Oh, that's right, oh.
We have another meeting, yep.
That, that should be plenty of time.
Yeah, I think so. All right, I'll bring him in right now.
Okay.
I'm here.
Hi, Jason.
Hi.
So we're still live, but we, we need to, because we have two applicants for the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee, we need to deliberate. We have two great candidates, Cynthia Moore and Beth Davison.
Yeah. I would say this, we, we, we had a vacancy for a long time, and now, now we have the problem of having two good applicants for the, for the, for the volunteer position. So, you know, I, I looked over both of their applications, and, you know, I would have a hard time making a choice, because, you know, obviously, Beth has a lot of good experience, having worked for Boroughs, cares for troops, and, you know, I mean, I, I would say she, it looks like her experience working with them is a nonprofit that has given aid to people. Cindy also has a lot of experience working with, you know, disabled people, so I, I think, I think they're both very good and, and, and serving on like the, the Special Needs Advocacy Council, and I don't know, a lot of good experience for, from both of them, so. That's my input. It's non-committal, I guess.
Thank you. Yeah, it's tough when you have, when you have good applicants, and everybody has something to offer, that's the problem, and we don't like turning away.
Absolutely.
People who want to volunteer. That's the rough part, you know, it's not like we're, we're giving a position away, where we're trying to determine a salary. I mean, these are people who are volunteering their time without pay, and.
Absolutely.
Hate to say no. So, yeah, you were mentioning some things on Cynthia's application, the Council of Parents, Attorneys and Advocates, and Special Needs Advocacy Network. And she said she is a disabled individual with an adult son who also has disabilities. Let's see.
Yeah, I just think that that's, um, that, that could be an important perspective to, to have when, when you're dealing with, with awarding aid. You know, she, I, I, for, for this position, that, you know, that, that's just a, a good perspective to have.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I would talk up Beth's experience having, you know, the, they, they apparently assist people with, with, with small, small grants to help people that, you know, need. It says on her application, heating oil, car repairs, furniture and food, and scholarships. So that, that's in line with what the committee does as well. So, I mean, they, they both have really good experience, I think, in my mind.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with that. You know, it's just, it's, I'm just trying to put myself in the, in the shoes of somebody that's, that's looking for aid. You know, would they be more comfortable talking with somebody who shares their, their perspective on, on being disabled? And would that perspective help her, you know, make, make, I don't want to say better decisions, but more understanding decisions, I guess? I mean, I just think from, from, you know, with, with the charter, with the, the, the committee is, it just makes sense to have somebody that has that, that perspective on the, the committee that just gives them a connection to, to the work they'll be doing.
You know, and she's also shared the fact that she has a disability, and is very clearly opened herself up to, to, you know, working with other groups on that.
Right, yeah.
You know, so that's another thing, too, that she's not, you know, I think sometimes people have limitations, but they're, they, for some reason, don't want to be open about it, or share, or whatever. And I think, you know, she made it very clear that that's something that, that obviously is important to her, and she would like to be able to lend that, that frame of reference to this, to this committee. Again, Beth has great qualifications, too, but I do, I do agree with Tim. I think that her, her particular situ, her personal situation lends itself to being able to provide additional insight, I guess is how I would summarize it. Here.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Jason, is there anything else that you wanted to say, or?
No, I mean, I think they're both good candidates, so I don't, I don't think you're making a wrong choice here with, you know, whatever, whatever choice is, is made. So hopefully, you know, the, the person that is not chosen for this position can find another slot on another volunteer board and, you know, serve the town, because I, I think these are both great people to come forward and volunteer.
Yep, absolutely, 100% agree. Which reminds me, I used to judge the science fair at the middle school for about five or six years. That was one of the most difficult things I have ever done, because you have to tell somebody, you know, and they're all really good, you have to pick one. That was rough. And this is, this reminds me of that every time we get into these deliberations with these, but.
Yeah, like, like I said, I mean, it, it's just ironic that we've had, had an opening on this committee for a while, and, and all of a sudden, we, we have two really good applicants for, for it, and, you know, I wish we could put both of them on.
I, yeah, I was just going to say the same thing.
Yeah.
I wish we could change the charter right now and just bring them both on. You know, so, Tim, I cut you off. I think Tim was going to say something.
No.
Okay, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that the interview subcommittee recommend to the Board of Selectmen, Cynthia Moore, for the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee.
Okay, I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes to bring Cynthia Moore on, and we strongly encourage Beth Davison to please, please look at the website, see what else that she could possibly participate in. We never have a full slate of people on all our committees, so, you know, it sounds like she really would like to get involved, so that'd be great if she could do that, so.
Yes.
On both of those applicants, so.
I second that. Please, Beth, take a look.
That's right. So Jason, I really appreciate it. Thank you very much for being here.
No, no problem. Thanks, guys, for, for doing all these interviews and, you know, serving the town.
You're welcome.
Perfect. Thank you, Jason.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we only had one applicant for the Youth Commission, Sherri Clark. So do I hear a motion for that?
Yeah, make a more, motion that the interview committee recommend Sherri Clark to the Board of Selectmen for appointment to the Youth Commission.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, and that passes. Sherri Clark will be recommended for a position on the Youth Commission, and I thank her for applying, and I thank June David Fords and Gilli Nahom for, for being here tonight as well. And our last appointment would be for the Historic District Commission alternate member, Bob Light, applied for that and interviewed. Do I hear a motion for that?
Make a motion to recommend Robert Light to the Historic District Commission as an alternate to the Board of Selectmen.
And I second that. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that passes, and Bob Light will be recommended for appointment to the Historic District Commission as an alternate member, and we thank him for applying, and also thank Norm Corbin for coming in as well, so. That ends this interview session.
Thank you.
And we'll be back at work on this in December, I believe.
Yes, yes, I believe December 2nd, Master Plan.
Okay.
All right, we did it, yes.
You were great, Diane.
Thank you. Good night.